I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education meeting to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Let's stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody to the Lee County Board of Education meeting tonight. If you are a guest, you are all welcome to our meeting. If you are staff, we welcome every one of you. And we also want to recognize our press corps that are always here. And the representative from Fort Bragg, from the military, Laurie Salavia. Thank you for being here. And we have a new guy from Sanford-Harrow who will be covering our meeting, Noah Grant. Good to see you, Noah. And if I didn't call your name, you are very special. We just didn't want to call everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. And at this time, we have a comment time, public comment. And we have just one name, Ms. Smith. Can you come forward and talk to us?
Ms. Smith, you have three minutes for your comments.
Oops, hello? My name is Irene Smith. I live at 547 West Weatherspoon Street in Sanford. Members of the board, Dr. Bryan. There are two striking omissions in the recent criticisms of the Lee County's public school system. The first is that the children are seldom if ever mentioned. The second is that the critics never offer any constructive suggestions for improving the schools right now. The proof of the pudding is in the eating. You can't go very far in Sanford or Lee County without encountering the products of our public schools. They are our elected officials. Their energy and expertise power our city and county governments. Their volunteer presence fuels the extraordinary network of community-based organizations that do the heavy lifting in the human services in this county. They are the teachers in our classrooms. They are our policemen, our firefighters, our garbage collectors, and our mail carriers. They are us. Thank you for producing productive citizens for this community for more than 100 years. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will ask Ms. Bowen to read to us the code of ethics and the vision of Lee County Board of Education.
I have the vision statement first. Lee County Schools, in partnership with the community, will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. And next, I have the code of ethics for school board members. This is policy 2120. The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should: Avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. Two, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. Three, avoid the misuse of public funds. Four, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And five, avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. At this time, I will need a motion for the approval of the agenda for August 8, 2017.
Mr. Chair, I am going to respectfully ask if we could amend today's agenda to add an item to unfinished business. I'd like to add a review of the superintendent's contract extension. And with your permission, I'll speak to the motion.
A review?
Yes.
Okay.
Of the extension. As you know, I was not here at the last meeting. And I've prepared some comments regarding this and kind of where my thoughts are. I'd be glad to share that with anybody who wants to see a copy of it. As you know, in July, I was not able to attend the meeting due to some family circumstances. My absence had been discussed with the chair as well as the superintendent during our June meeting. I offered to call in and participate by phone and was assured that it was unnecessary. Because of that, the actions taken in the July meeting call in a couple of questions. Number one, policy number 2335 entitled "Advanced Delivery of Meeting Materials" requires that all meeting materials be delivered to the members and made available to the public at least four days prior to the meeting. This policy ensures that there will be no surprises during the meetings and that the public has fair notice to attend and hear issues that they may have interest in. Number two, policy number 2330 entitled "Board Meeting Agenda" requires that the agenda be published and that all materials be delivered to the board members. It does state that by a majority vote, any board member can request an item to be added to the agenda. During the July meeting, Dr. Smith voted to approve the agenda with no mention of adding the superintendent's contract extension. That agenda was approved. Finally, number three, policy 7420 entitled "Superintendent Selection and Contract" states that, and I quote, "Any subsequent revisions to or extensions of the superintendent's contract, including any additional compensation, will likewise be voted upon by the board in open session at a duly-called meeting of the board after the board members have had an opportunity to review the written amended contract." We as a board adopt policy, and I'm the chair of the policy committee, in order to determine how we conduct business in a professional and efficient way. Because the contract extension was not on the agenda and because no motion was made in open session to add it to the agenda and because it was sprung on this board with no warning and because it was discussed and voted on in closed session without the actual contract available for review, that contract should be invalid. We should reconsider the vote, rescind the contract, and redo the process by the policy that we have sworn to uphold. As a final note, I want to note that in my absence as the chair of the policy committee, it is still incumbent upon each board member to know the policies by which we govern. Otherwise, through slick action and quick talk, someone can convince you to violate the very policies that we are sworn to uphold. I respectfully ask that we have a reconsideration of the superintendent's contract extension based upon the fact it was not conducted according to the school board policies.
And I'll second that motion.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion to add it to the agenda under unfinished business. According to Robert's Rules of Order, I cannot call for the review since I was not here and I did not vote on the prevailing side. It would be up to one of the two board members present here tonight to agree to review this. I'm not asking that the end change. All I'm asking is that it be done right. And when all members are here, I'm not asking that we vote tonight because I think that would be highly unfair. I think that with Dr. Smith not here and Dr. Livingston not here, it would only be fair for us to rescind the contract, get it out to us for review, and let's look at it next month.
I want to tell you that this is the board action have been carried out and under the advice of our attorney. And I would just want to tell you that it's a done deal.
Respectfully, the attorney advises us on legal issues. It is our responsibility to uphold the policies that we dictate to live by.
Yeah, the policy-
And I do have all those policies here available for anyone who cares to take a look at them. Policy 2330, policy 2335, and policy 7420 available.
The policy was followed, Ms. Bowen?
Sir, it was not.
You were not here.
I understand, but the policy dictates that we must have the contract in hand at the time that it is brought forth. And that was not done. It was not on the agenda.
It was done.
And there was no motion made to add it to the agenda.
The superintendent gave his, when we did the review, the superintendent gave his contract to every one of you during the closed session. Every board member had the contract of the superintendent in hand. It was all given to you.
Sir, that is not the proposed revised contract. All I'm saying is I felt that that was done very shadily in my absence without it on the agenda to give me any indication whatsoever that it was on for vote that evening. And that's fine. If you don't want to abide by the policy or even hear my argument, I understand.
The policy was carried out appropriately under the law.
I believe there's a motion in a second on the floor to add the reconsideration to unfinished business.
I don't know what you're trying to do.
We have a motion in a second. We have to vote on it.
Yeah, okay. Let's vote for what you call, what's your motion?
I make a motion that we amend tonight's agenda to add a review of the superintendent's contract to unfinished business, basically so that we can have this discussion in open session. That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion.
You have the motion seconded?
Yes, and I second it, yes.
Do we have any counter motion? We have no other motion. Everyone in agreement of that motion, let's raise our hand. Okay. We'll add the review.
Thank you. In that case, I make a motion that we approved the amended agenda for 8/8/2017.
Okay. We need a motion for the approval of the agenda. Oh, the motion is to rescind the-
No, the motion is to review.
Okay.
It is not a rescind.
Okay.
That's correct. I just want to have the conversation.
Okay, okay.
The motion is to amend the agenda, not to amend the contract.
Because we have not even talked about the agenda. So that's why I wanted to know what you were trying to do.
Correct, I want to amend the agenda before we approve the agenda.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the revision that Board Member Bowen presented.
So that's your second.
Okay.
I had the motion. Patrick has the second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next thing on our minute tonight is the approval of the minutes for 6:30, 7:10, 7:11, and 8:01.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of 6:30, 7:10, 7:11, and 8:01, all of 2017.
We need a second for that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next thing we have right now is we need the chairman's report. I'll just tell you what we have. I have a few things to let us know during the last, since the last meeting, we have the Project Lift, which is a very good program that was organized by our system. We have the technology camp for the teachers. We have the STEM camp for students. And we have several other things that was done during the holidays. So I want to say thank you for everyone that participated in Project Lift, in the technology camp, and the STEM camp for students. At this time, I will defer to the superintendent for his report.
I'm going to switch it up. Accountability report. We've been doing a lot of things in the district as Mr. Akoneshu already mentioned. Waiting on our accountability results in September. So that'll be coming out at the state board meeting. The other thing I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to ask Kelly Jones, finance officer, and her staff to come forward, please. It's with great pleasure tonight that I get to recognize our finance office. Each year, state provides awards in three different areas for excellence in finance. And if you'll just bear with me for just a second, I'd like to read off three of those things. First award, the Government Finance Officer Association Certificate of Achievement Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I'm going to use the acronym for this. The GF.O.A., Established Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program in 1945, to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports. That's one award. Second award, Association of School Business Officials Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. This national award is given to annually lead finance officers who voluntarily submit their school system's comprehensive annual finance, financial report caper for review. And then the third one is State Board of Education Recognition of Achievement Financial Resource Management. This award is presented annually to finance officers of units who have shown effective cash management and use of state funds, accurate and timely financial reporting, and no salary odd exceptions or position overdrafts as of fiscal year end. As I said before, we won all three of those awards for our finance department. We were, there are 115 school districts in the state. We were one of 13 school districts who won the award, the state. So instead of a superintendent's extra effort award tonight, I'd like to recognize the finance department as our extra award, extra effort award winner. And if I could ask the chair and vice chair and Ms. Bowen, since you're part of the finance committee, you could hand out these certificates. And if we could get a picture with everybody, it'd be great.
Patrick, you'd be pretty.
And before we do that, before we do that, Kelly, could you come forward and just say a few words to the board if anybody has any questions?
I'd just like to say I have the best of the ladies. We've all worked together for a long time. They always go above and beyond the extra, anything that I ask. If it's to stay late or work over or if we've got a computer problem, they're always right there to support me. And I just appreciate all that they do. They make me look good. But we are a team effort and we all work together and we try our best we can. You know, it does pay off, so.
And they survived July, which is a big deal. So congratulations, ladies.
And I want to say on behalf of the board, thank you for what you do on behalf of our school system and keeping all the bills paid and keeping us straight with all that we do here. Thank you very much.
Are we switching?
Oh, sorry.
It's music, cheers, yeah.
This is.
When I was switching.
I didn't know you were saying.
It would be illegal. It was just a mistake. We're not switching.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, the curriculum committee, Ms. Ufiliya Livingston is out of town. And I don't know if Dr. Kobo has anything. They didn't have any meeting in July. So the next one is facility and technology. Dr. Lynn Smith is not here. And they have no meeting in July also. Finance, there was no meeting in July. And policy.
There was no meeting in July. The policy committee is set to meet on next Tuesday, the 15th. I had to think what day of the week it was. But Tuesday, the 15th, 5 o'clock at the Heinz Building.
Okay. Can I ask something about the agenda for the finance committee?
Yes, for the finance committee?
Right, finance.
Okay.
Just curious, I know back in April, we talked about policy coming forth about how we're going to rebid our contracts and different stuff. Is that coming up anytime soon or?
That policy is not on our agenda for this month. I can add it to for informational purposes. Ms. Jones and Dr. Bryan were working on that, so. And notice hereby given to Dr. Agconson. If we can get that on the agenda for the 15th, that would be fantastic. The review of a new policy on bidding of insurance and benefits, competitive bid process. Thank you.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. We have, we really have no new business.
Under the unfinished business.
Under the unfinished business.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, I'm not asking that we change the outcome of the contract. That's not the point. The point is that if I was not notified that the contract extension was on the agenda, it was not on the agenda. And if I wasn't notified and I am a member of this board and nobody gave me the courtesy of a call to say, hey, this is coming before our board tonight after I offered to call in and participate remotely, then if I didn't know it was coming before this board, how could the public have known? And if the public did not know, then duly notified public meeting did not occur. That is my position. And I've looked at the policy. And it says that any contract extension must be made after the board reviews the proposed renewal contract. To everything I've heard, to the minutes that were just approved, nowhere in the minutes does it say that anyone made a motion to add the superintendent's contract to the agenda. If it was not on the agenda, then the business that took place was not properly brought before this board. It's in violation of school board policy and Robert's Rules of Order.
No, I will say this to you that the superintendent's contract was on the personnel. Every time, when we did the review, it was the same policy that affects the personnel. When we did the superintendent's review, it was done in closed session. It was not done here. We voted outside here. We didn't debate it in the public. We look at the review, we did the review. The review was not given to the public. It's in closed session. So to say we are in violation, we are not in violation. We have the copies of the minutes of the review. After the review, the policy says that, the law says, we have to have the superintendent contract renewed in the last year, few months in the last year. It has less than one year left on this contract. So what the motion Dr. Smith made for us, it was still within the policy. So your interpretation, because you interpreted it one way, does not mean that your interpretation is correct. And you did not even give a submission that you want an amendment to this policy. I didn't read, I didn't know all of the things that you're reading tonight. So it was just like, almost like a coup. We have a quorum of the board. When this was done before, we have six members of the board. And we cannot hold the board alone because one member is not there. Today, we didn't have Ms. Livingston. Dr. Smith was having some things to attend to in town. It's still coming. So to say that we didn't follow the policy, we followed the advice of our attorney and we did it properly according to the law. So I want to refute that.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman, I'd like-
Ms.-
Am I not allowed to speak?
Yes, I have to recognize you before you speak, please.
Recognize me, please.
And, yes, I want to hear what you want to say.
After speaking, after careful consideration, I also spoke with the North Carolina State School Board Association. Both legal authorities said to reference policy 7420, which is also the state mandated, the policies that they provide for us. We pay for a service at the North Carolina School Board Association for not only policy development, but also legal advice. During that process, the key words that come out, policy 7420, and this is just a point of clarification, entitles a selection and contract of any subsequent revisions or extensions, and it's exactly quoted in there, at a duly-called meeting with an opportunity to review the written amended contract. Can you tell us honestly in this room that a written amended contract, and it does say amended and it talks about extensions in policy 7420, were the board members in closed session handed a written amended contract? Simple, yes or no?
We have to vote before we, we have, we were only given an extension. The contract did not change. I don't know what this is.
My recommendation would be to speak with someone at the State Board of Education and the superintendent of schools because we do have a legal attorney that does provide us information. But so do other legal entities as well that we actually pay for with school board funds. That policy clearly states that that amended contract, regardless of the situation from before, that amended contract is supposed to be in the hands of the board members and with the subsequent revisions has to be before the board members. As she had described earlier, there were at least four different violations of the policy. Now, regardless, it's not going to change it.
I would just offer, this is just a copy of the policy 7420.
And that's the one that was presented to me as well. I had no idea she was going to do this today. But from a legal viewpoint, because I communicate with them on a daily basis almost in reference to our policies and changing policies, that policy, at least three of those four, were not followed during that meeting. Now, I understand that you've got other guidance and I don't want to have a conflict or anything. I just want to present those to you.
I just find it very odd. I just go back to what I said, Mr. Chair. If I as a board member, if I as a board member had no prior knowledge that this is coming before the board, then how can you say that it was properly notified?
Do you have a prior knowledge of every employee that we give contracts to?
No, sir, but I know that there's going to be a personnel mission. And if you'll look at the minutes that were approved this evening and if you have a separate vote, it's a separate agenda item. Which is why the minutes that we just approved have the personnel report and a duly-made motion to extend the superintendent's contract. That was made during closed session without it prior existence on the agenda. I feel like it was done on a whim or maybe intentionally because the votes worked out. And again, I'm not asking us to bring this back to a vote tonight because I think that would be unfair to the people who are not here.
You know that even if you were here and you voted against it, the vote will still be approved. You know that.
I can count and realize that the votes necessarily wouldn't have changed. What would have changed is the fact that it never would have come to a vote because I'm the chair of the policy committee and it would not have been duly brought before this party and this board.
It was duly brought because it's on that personnel. So I would just say at this time that if we have nothing else, we just move forward to the closed session.
In being fairness, Mr. Chair,
Yes.
in being fairness to Dr. Livingston and Dr. Smith and so that we're all transparent and being fair to everybody on this board, I make a motion that we table this discussion until they are here at our next board meeting.
I'll second that.
And that way, we will have legal representation. And that way, we will have legal representation as well.
Yes. Yeah, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed? I think everybody here is aye. There is no oppose here.
Thank you.
At this time, we will go, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, Lee County Board of Education, go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, and not public record under North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 318,11A1.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion that we come back into open session from closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back in open session. At this time, we need a motion for the, to approve the student appeal hearing and then the personnel.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the results of the student transfer appeal hearing that just occurred in closed session.
Second.
It's automatic personnel.
All right. I make a motion that we approve the personnel report that was just presented in closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the one-year and two-year contract of the two assistant principals presented in closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, as always, I make the most important motion of the night, motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
The motion is approved. Thank you all for coming tonight, and God bless you.